People always said, maybe I can never be a project. At least they were all good to tell us.
It's crazy. 10 years and they're already doing it.
Like I say, at least I knew on my book picked it, sir. Made me feel better.
Welcome to the Village of Horsets Board of Trustees Meeting. The date is Thursday, May 2nd, and the time is 6 o'clock. This meeting is being livestreamed via Zoom, which can be accessed via the Village's website at horsets.org. Also, this meeting is being recorded for posting to adhere to the recommendation of New York State Committee of Open Governance. Please call the roll for attendance.
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Here.
Trustee Kowalski.
Here.
Trustee Benifron.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We move into audience participation. At this time, I welcome any person in attendance to approach the podium. If you so wish, provide us with your name and address. As a reminder, this is for public comment, not a dialogue with the Board of Trustees. Additionally, the Board asks you to limit your comments to a maximum of 3 minutes.
Park Turpulouly 702 Sayer Street. I'll keep it under the 3 minutes, I promise. About 3 weeks ago, I witnessed a small tanker truck taking on water at the fire hydrant located in front of the DPW building. There's no meter to say how much water was drawn. Last night, while eating dinner, I saw the Water Wagon truck coming up County Route 64 Extension, and I believe he was probably over the 5-ton weight limit. That's not my concern, and maybe somebody else is concerned that he's over the weight limit as far as I see it. My concern is he took on water. Again, there's no meter at this hydrant. I don't know how this could, how they could be paying for water if there's no meter. If it is the honor system, I don't know, I couldn't believe what they say was pumped into those, that tank. Is it a flat rate? If I have to pay for my water usage, why aren't these people paying for that water accordingly, what they pumped? This is like a water wagon, charge their customers for delivery, and it's not cheap, I call it today. If they are paying what they should, that's a good profit margin for that business. With that being said, there is no matter, no meter, how is it helping to reduce the Susquehanna River Basin Commission's percentage on missing water? Which is now at 35%, and has to be lowered to 25, 20%, excuse me, by 2026 or 2027? I don't remember the date. And I did find it on the site, not an easy thing to do. I don't recall the date that was mentioned for that, 2026 to 2027. Every gallon of water should be accounted for to help lower that percentage to come in with the 20% threshold that is required by that commission. Last year, one of the trustee meetings I attended, it was discussed that businesses and residents aren't paying for water due to water meter issues. And they were not able to access some of the residents' homes. And that situation is, if that situation has been corrected, aren't corrected, the villages, other residents are paying for their water usage. I'm no attorney, but as I see it, it comes down to a theft of service that these people aren't paying for their water. Last year was also mentioned at one of the meetings that the town of Horsets had a feeder at the facility that hadn't been hooked up. They seem to water their grass pretty regularly. If that water is not being accounted for, maybe that would redo, if it is accounted for, maybe that would reduce that percentage that has to be met to 20%. Every gallon of water that is accounted for reduces that percentage. That's just my opinion. I don't expect any answers tonight on this situation, but I think what I've said needs to be looked into. Once again, if I have to pay for that water, why isn't the town paying for their fair share of water being used? If it sounds a little angry, I am. I'm paying for other people's water. Why? I have to pay for it. The residents here in the Village of Horsets have to pay for it. We got people who aren't being billed. I remember some discussion last year about a billing issue of who's paying water. I could be wrong. I, I just don't think it's fair to the residents that I'm paying, they're paying for water that other people are getting free. All I'm asking for is those 2 businesses. I don't know who they are. I know one is the Water Wagon. Must be making a hell of a profit if we don't know how much water they take. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone else want to approach the podium and provide comment?
We're going to respond to accusations.
Okay.
I could respond. So we have a bulk water permit, and the companies like Water Wagon and such have to pay, they pay $50 for the bulk water permit. Then they go in, like, we know that that particular truck is, I don't know if it's a 5,000, 10,000, I can't remember how big, but they fill up. So every fill-up, they log it down. And then we bill them out, and it's $14 per 1,000 gallons of water that we bill for the bulk water that they have.
Okay, but it's not a question, let me answer.
And as far, and then as far as your, your concern about people not getting billed, people get billed. If we can't get a read, we do an estimated fee.
Okay.
So we are, we are billing everyone that we have service for.
But has the water meter situation been corrected? I understand you weren't able to get some of the residents' homes because the meters weren't reading properly or something along those lines?
That, there's always, there's always something. There's broken wires, you know, there's, there's always some kind of maintenance that has to be done.
Okay, so you're telling me every village resident that this tank filler water is billed? Maybe they pay later, don't pay at all, because they don't care?
They are, every, every, everyone's being billed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I still think that those trucks that are pulling in here, if we have to lower that water percentage down to 20%, whatever it is that the Susquehanna River Basin Commission is, is asking, is that figured into the amount of water that's used, and they know about this?
Yes.
It is, it is being accounted for.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to explain to me, the bulk water permit, they pay to the $50 per fill-up, or?
No, $50 for the permit for access to that, to that hydrant.
Once a year.
Once a year.
Once a year.
Okay. And then every fill-up is the, based off the capacity of the truck at the rate of $14 per 1,000?
Minimum bill of, of 1,000. So if someone shows up with a 250-gallon truck,
Okay.
the minimum bill is $14. So I'm going to pay the minimum of 1,000 for that.
And how does that 14 per 1,000 rate against the rate that we're charging right now?
I can't, I can't answer that.
Can I answer that right now?
Okay. But up to 4,000 gallons on the flat rate is the $5.03 per 1,000 gallons, right?
Well, the minimum is 6,000 for the quarter that we build.
You can't, you can't.
Oh, the next, okay, yeah. And that would?
So they're paying $14 per 1,000.
Okay.
So 6,000, 6, 6,000 down, 6 times 14, whatever.
Yeah, so that's more than, okay.
Plus the $50.
Plus the $50 permit. And that's being accounted for, and does account, so we don't, that doesn't go against our leakage rate?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I have a question. Do they, the honor, it's the honor system, right? Do we have a camera on that hydrant?
Uh, yes, there are cameras on the garage.
And that's where they'd be filling up, correct? I was just curious.
Do all of them come in, like, the people for the pools too? Are they coming to the garage now too?
Yes. Yeah, we no longer fill pools from the fire hydrants.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else in person? Okay, with that being closed, since there's no more in-person comments, I welcome anyone attending the meeting via the Village's Zoom to address the board at this time. All right, that closes out audience participation. Let's move on to approve the Board of Trustees minutes for 4:18.
We resolve that the new members of the Board of Trustees meeting will be 20:24, and this name stood approved as entered by the board.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
Aye.
Trustee Benifron.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye. All right, 5. With our inaugural board presentation, I anxiously call the Horsets Family Resource Center up for the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us back. We're really excited to talk to you about some stuff that we've got going on and give you some information about what the Family Resource Center is. We talked a little bit about it last time we were here. This time, I did bring you a whole year's quarterly reports that I believe, so you can take a peek at what our numbers look like and what we're serving. So some things that I like to highlight, if you've never been to our resource center, we have 2 locations. We offer playrooms and spaces for families with young children. There's no age limit, but we do say that our spaces are for about 0 to 6. That's kind of what they're geared towards, that's school readiness. So our mission is school readiness, supporting important parenting, and establishing community connections for all of these families that live in our community that might have need that they're just not sure where to get help. So we help a lot of families. Our numbers, 2 years ago, we, just coming out of COVID, were about 300 families. As of the end of 2023, we're at 801 families right now, unique families being served at the center. That translates to about 11,000 visits from people over the course of last year. So those are some huge numbers for us. We're very excited about that. But last year, we also took on a new project, which is what we're here to really talk to the village about, because this is happening outside in the park. So we did our summer lunch program for the very first time last year. So we tagged on to a program that's already in existence to offer lunches to children, ages 18 and younger, for free in the summer while school is not in session. This is super important, especially as we saw the need really grow last year into something different. So, you know, pre-COVID and just after COVID, we're seeing a lot of kids and families looking for resources around education, speech delay, gross and fine motor skills, all the things we expect to see. Moving forward into last year, and even into early this year, we're really seeing basic needs that need to be met. We're seeing food insecurity, we're seeing families that aren't able to purchase hygiene items, or maybe they're in need of diapers. So there's a lot, it's a lot of different kinds of needs than what we're used to, to working within our center. So there's a few things that we've done to combat that. One of them was the summer lunch program. Another was that we found funding through the New York Bar Association to offer what we're calling advocacy, which is giving a staff person time within their week to work one-on-one with families, to connect them to community resources. So if somebody comes in and says, you know, we're struggling with housing, or we're struggling with food insecurity, or hey, we've got those needs met, but we're really struggling to make sure that kiddo has clothes to go back to school, they're growing a little too quick, whatever the needs are, that staff person will work with them one-on-one to make sure that those needs get met. And we also have Mary Jo, who's not only extremely talented, but also well-trained to help families who have kiddos that might need a 504 or an IEP in school, they might need some accommodations. And that's a really hard thing and very complex thing for families to navigate. I've spoken to attorneys who tell me that they can't even navigate it themselves for their children. So having an outside person there who is that neutral party to go with them, so Mary Jo does that for some of the families that come to us with those needs, though she'll go with them to the school and advocate for, hey, they, they need, you know, some accommodations in the classroom to make this really successful. So we're trying to address those needs as we see them, food insecurity being a really big one on our list this year. So we do intend to host the summer lunch program now in perpetuity, as far as we see it. So it is sponsored by the USDA, the meals are sponsored through the USDA. So we are set up now as a site. They will provide all of the brown bag lunches for us every day. So really, what we provide is the staffing and all the extra programming. So last year, when we started this program, we kind of all had the same feeling that making it just free lunches might chase some people away. Not everyone would like to admit that they need that to, to help sustain their family. Not everyone is comfortable taking that kind of help. So what we did is we backed up our summer lunch program to some kind of special event. So every day, we had something different. We gave out free books with the Family Reading Partnership as a partner. We gave out clothing with Karen's Clothing Cupboard. We did pool passes so that families could get in for free on Wednesdays. We did the Kids' Farmers Market through the Food Bank of the Southern Tier. We did backpacks, we did wood food at the end of the summer, we did soccer shots, we did tanglewood. We partnered with Elmyre Cycles for our final lunch. They brought bicycles, and all of the kids that attended entered a raffle to ring scooter or bicycle. They also brought several helmets in various sizes, so they were able to appropriately size a safe helmet for all their kids. I think we gave out over 200 helmets that day. There were, it was quite a bit. Several, yes. So we also have partnered with this through Lunchpiles. Oh, yeah, Lunchpiles, gave us some free lunch boxes and things like that to make sure the kids went back to school with lunch bags that they could use. So we work with a lot of different community organizations and just people interested in philanthropy to, to kind of make this program work. So last year, just to give you the numbers again, we served 2,314 lunches. We fully expect that to go up. Last year, getting approved for this site was, it's a process, but they don't let you know until June, middle of June, whether you're approved. So we were kind of waiting. Yeah, so our calendars didn't get out to all the schools we would have liked to get out to. We didn't have quite enough community visibility to make sure we got to everybody. But even that being said, it was about 100 lunches every single day, which was great. And they've never had a site be that successful in Horsets before, which is why one wasn't running. So I think the consistency of being able to offer it every single day for the entire duration of the summer has made a huge difference. So we're, it's 7 weeks last year, it was 6 weeks this year, just running out of the weird school calendar this year, I think.
And there, there isn't another lunch site that offers an extended program. So typically, when your lunch sites are set up, they're an hour long. You arrive between noon and 1:00. You sit and eat your lunch, and you go home. So I'd like to think that part of the success is that we're outside, we're at a park, we have families meeting each other for, whether it's a playdate, and they're also getting a nutritious lunch, and we're adding something to that. So we're adding a sense of community, and we're adding a sense of belonging. And again, we're not chasing anyone away. You know what? There's no stigma attached, because you're coming for a picnic, you know?
And there's no pre-qualification?
There's no pre-qualifications, there's no registration. We take none of their information. They show up, they say, we would like a lunch, we hand them a bag, and we mark it on a tally sheet. That is it.
So yes, that is the only information, would be a tally, just.
Of numbers.
We have to do a lunch, and we marked it on a paper, but there is no personal information, or how old are you, or how many times have you been here before, there's, it's.
How much is mom and dad make? There's no qualification for this program. It's just everyone. So there's a few things that, you know, I love to highlight numbers, but there's so much more than numbers. We gave out 520 books, and the most impactful thing that we saw last summer was, one of the first days that we offered these free books, we had lunch, and we got through with, with serving lunch, and all the kids had gotten their books. And we look around, and under every tree in Sullivan Park were kids sitting and reading books. 3-year kids, 3 or 4 kids to a tree, just all sitting in the park reading a book, and that was so meaningful. We don't take pictures of this program, because we don't want people to feel like they're being advertised as people who come to get free lunch, because we know that that's not always comfortable. So we don't take pictures, so I don't have things to show people like that. But gosh, is that a great mental image that we went home with. We gave out, for the Kids' Farmers Market, we marked 472 children had taken produce over the course of the summer, and that's offered every single week. We do carry that through right now in our other programs, so we do that monthly. As often as the Food Bank can, they send us food, and we give it out to the community for the people who come to our center. It's always advertised. Our center is similar to this program in that you don't have to register. We take very limited information. It's always free. Absolutely. Everything we do is free to the community. You pay for absolutely nothing at our center. We subsist completely on private donation. We do not receive any county, state, or federal funding. We're completely privately funded, and through donations and grants, we're able to do all of this. So we're really excited for this summer. But this program in particular does create a whole new budget for us. There's quite a bit of staffing that goes into a program like this. So when you're talking 6 weeks, every single day, Monday through Friday, plus all the special programs, plus any special things that you want to bring in. Last year, we did Lemonade in a Bag, we did Root Beer Float Day.
So with, with children, it's awful. It's oftentimes like the novelty, right? So we did several things. I like to be able to share things that parents can take home and they can do again. So we made Lemonade in a Bag. So everyone got half of a lemon, and everyone got a scoop of ice, and everyone got some sugar. And so anyway, you put your ingredients in a, it was a black bag, and you shake it, and you squeeze it. So again, we're incorporating some library OT skills, we're shaking, and then they all get a straw, and they get to drink the lemonade that we've made. So we've just given parents, grandparents loved it. They were the biggest fans. So we did root beer floats to celebrate Root Beer Float Day, National Root Beer Day. And I can't tell you how many of those children had never had a root beer float. So everyone got their cup with a scoop of ice cream and some root beer. I mean, that's a summer treat that I think many of us would say is pretty normal and expected, and so many children have never even had one. So we also did make ice cream in a bag. So you add all the ingredients in a small bag, you put it inside of larger, the black bag with some ice and some salt. Shake, 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 add your sprinkles, or add your chocolate chips, and you can eat the ice cream that evening. So we did a lot of things that were not so foreign, like not such a foreign concept, but such a great.
It's informative for families to take home. Like, you can do this at home. You don't have to have a ton of money to make your summer great. And you, you said something to me when we started the program that was really meaningful. What about those kids that don't go on summer vacation? What do they go back to school and tell everybody they did this summer? So we really wanted to create a program where they had something to tell their class when they said, what did you do this summer? And I think we really did accomplish that. So for this year, we'd love to give you some information on what we've got going this year. So we did make a request to the village for some stuff. We got a response to that today. So we're hoping to be able to subsidize the class of, of the pool. That is a line item that I'm hoping we can take out of our expense budget this year, so that we can allocate that somewhere else. The other thing that we're hoping to do is to be a lot more visible in this community. So we do plan to get our calendars out to all the preschools, as well as all of the elementary and middle schools in a paper format before they go home for the summer, so that they can stick it on the fridge and know where they're coming for the summer to get, to get lunches, to get some activities. We also intend to put that out to the high schoolers. They are also very welcome at this site. So they have a portal, so we'll put it out to them digitally. But then we're going to have some signage that is much more colorful, and that does not focus on lunch. It focuses on everything else we're going to do there with the benefit of a free lunch, to hopefully engage some families that haven't tried it out before. They don't necessarily need to even know it's a, you know, sponsored summer lunch site. They can just come for a program and happen to get a lunch. The, the last thing that we're really hoping to do, and the reason we're trying to find some space in the budget, is that this program is sponsored for children 18 and under. However, that does not mean that adults in the household are not also experiencing food insecurity. So they do allow us to purchase lunches for adults at a very nominal price. So we're hoping to find some money from some, some local donors to subsidize that and be able to offer lunch to the whole family. That way, mom and dad bringing the kids, or grandma, grandpa, or babysitter, whoever's bringing them, can also have a lunch with them. So it doesn't feel, it feels a little foreign to us sometimes, having the adults just facilitating lunch and not eating themselves. So we're trying to, to change that this year, to make the overall experience just really inclusive. And then Mary Jo's got a list of what we've already got lined up for the summer.
So my very rough draft of our calendar this summer, but we are bringing back the Bright Red Bookshelf. They will be at the park every Tuesday. We, we are bringing back. They will be at the park every Tuesday. We we are bringing back Water Wednesday in hopes that we can get some support there from. The village. Farmer's Market, we will have available to our families on Thursdays. Once again, tanglewood will be added to our program. Elmyre Cycles would like to do their event again on August sixteenth, which will be the last day of our program. We have connected once again with the Horseheads Free Library where the children's. The children's department director comes out and she does a story time. We have the Cornell Public Extension. We have two. Different dates where their SNAP ed coordinator will come out and they will do some programs.
If you've never seen that program, it's really important for families. It's really impactful. They take very cheap or easy to access ingredients and they teach families how to use ingredients that maybe they haven't used before. That's super cool for our farmer's market because last year we had about a million pounds of cabbage, but it's cheap.
And so little. It's cheap. I would like to say low cost, but healthy.
Yeah, so that teaches them what to do with all of those good things that we hand them.
Low cost, cheap, but still healthy meals. That are less expensive. And we still have a couple of calls out to some of our partners last year, just in hopes that they'll be able to fill in. We only have five days left that aren't filled in for for that summer calendar. So it's it's looking pretty positive. Our hope again is to have it complete this month, maybe mid-month. Last year, we were able to get our calendars out to the elementary schools within Horseheads. Like Shelby said, we weren't able to get to the preschools or to the private schools. But now that we know that we're going to have this program and we have enough time, we would like so that those other kids have that information.
I'm sorry, I might have missed it in the beginning. I do apologize if I did. But does this just incorporate families within Chamon County or do you do families?
Anyway, you can come anywhere to come to the Resource Center and to this program. We don't take any identifying information like that for this program. So literally anybody could come in. And for the Resource Center, we might take that information, but we serve over eighty zip codes right now currently. Coming from, I think, six counties. So yeah, it's quite a spread. And everyone is welcome. There's no, because we don't get any funding from the county. And because we don't get any funding from the state that kind of makes those lines a little harder, we are able to be open to everybody. And that's our, that's our goal.
Can you give us your address? Where are you located?
Yeah, so we're at ten thirty-four West Broad Street. We're inside the Methodist Church there. That's our our primary location, our first location. And then we have a second location at the Arnett Mall next to the Pickleball Courts, if you know where those are now. So those are the two places that we're at. The church has a playroom, like a designated space that's just ours. And then we also use the gym, which we set up on dates that we're there. And it has an outdoor playground. So it's a great little spot when families are looking for something to do. And then at the mall, it's a very much larger version of our playroom.
This is what makes a community great. I said that last year when you spoke, is the Resource Center. So thank you for all you do. You can feel the warmth. And I said this to you last year, you ladies talk. And it's unbelievable. It's fantastic. You're into it. And that's what our kids need. That's what our youth need. And I still can't believe you're privately funded. It blows my mind.
Yes, our budget has grown quite a bit too in the last two years, but we are diversifying to make sure we can keep up. We really didn't expect the exponential growth that we've seen over the last two years. We went from three hundred to five hundred and went, okay, are we going to top that to eight hundred? This year so far, we're at four hundred already and we're in May, May second. So I'm I'm really surprised to see where we'll be. We keep thinking we're going to stagnate and we're going to kind of plateau. Okay, we found everybody. And that doesn't seem to be happening quite yet. But we also have some goals for expansion to start bringing this program to nearby communities that that maybe can't reach us. Public transportation isn't perfect here. So there are families that are struggling. We also have a a large population of unhoused and homeless families right now. Within Chamon County that we're trying to find ways to outreach to. Because they would really benefit from these programs and we want to be a support for them as well.
Well, the word's out, you're going to keep growing.
I hope so.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions, trustees?
Thank you so much.
Our appreciation for the presentation.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, number six, we're going to move on to the award of paving bids.
In your packet, you should have the list of streets that we are going to be paving this year. We've got four streets that we're going to be paving using the remains of the twenty twenty-four construction monies. That will include the monies that we received from the county. And then we've got. Nine additional streets that we will be using the twenty-five construction monies for. So. It's at thirteen streets that we're going to be working on this season or this construction year. Most of these streets are following either work that was done by communications. By NICEAG or by us with the with the with the WEA project. In the last two weeks, we have had bid openings both for what we termed as the short bid. Or small bid and then the regular bid. The bids were have been awarded to the same contractor, which which will make things much easier. So what you have in front of you is the resolutions to accept those award, those bids and to give the awards to those contractors. And that authorizes me to proceed with the contract with these particular construction contractors to get this project started.
Questions, comments, concerns, trustees? The four streets that are on the twenty-four budget, does that have to be completed before our twenty-five budget goes into effect on the first of June or?
We're going to try to. We're going to try to.
That won't affect any of our tips funding then or?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. I mean, a lot of it's going to be, you know, once we get this contract awarded, now it's a matter of getting on their schedule. But we're going to try to do everything that we can to get it, you know, in this particular, in this month. And and then, of course, it's a matter of the of that invoicing us.
Okay, thank you. So Nate, small bid is for the four streets and then regular bid is for the remaining.
Correct.
That's how I broke it down.
Correct. And this is really the first time that we've ever done it this way. And it's simply because we had that additional money from the county to do.
Any other discussion? All right, let's go with the resolution.
Whereas Department of Public Works Supervisor Don Gaylord prepared a proposed in twenty twenty-four street paving program, which includes asphalt pavement overlay. And road rehabilitation work for the Village of Horseheads and the support approved same. And whereas the village utilizes a competitive bidding process that conforms to New York State requirements. And the village's purchasing policy to select a contractor for the construction project. And whereas the village advertised on April tenth, twenty twenty-four for submission of bids with supply and length of the determinist asphalt products of the Village of Horseheads. And whereas the following bids were opened and examined on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-four. Elmyre Road Materials LLC for type six top seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents a ton for type three binders, sixty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents a ton. And then Darrell Gravel Contracting Co. ninety-one dollars per ton for type six top eighty-five dollars per ton for type three binder. Whereas village fines submit of Elmyre Road Materials LLC in amount of seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six. And thirty-eight cents per ton laden place type six top and sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents per ton laden in place type three binder. To be complete and correct and supports an award of a construction contract for the twenty twenty-four street pro. Street program of the Village of Horseheads and recommend such award. And whereas Elmyre Road Materials LLC has been found to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for this project. Now therefore be resolved by the Village of Horseheads Board of Trustees as follows. The above recitals are true and correct and are incorporated into this resolution by reference. The village board awards the contract to Elmyre Road Materials LLC for the twenty twenty-four street program. The May twenty twenty-four street program. Village manager Nathan Abel is authorized to expand funds in amounts not to exceed budgeted funds for the vote program. Village manager Abel is authorized to enter into a contract with Elmyre Road Materials LLC. For the above program and to take any and all action necessary to implement this resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Bethany Mayer-Goodwin.
Aye.
Trustee Gross.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
Aye.
Trustee Benabrock.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Okay, this next resolution is on the regular bid.
Whereas Department of Public Works Supervisor Don Gaylord prepared a proposed twenty twenty-four street paving program, which includes an asphalt pavement overlay. And road rehabilitation work for the Village of Horseheads and the support of purchasing. And whereas the village utilizes a competitive bidding process that conforms to New York State requirements. And the village's purchasing policy to select a contractor for the construction project. And whereas the village advertised on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty-four for submission of bids for the supply. And length of the determinist asphalt products in the Village of Horseheads. And whereas the following bids were opened and examined on May first, twenty twenty-four. Elmyre Road Materials LLC for type six top one and a half to two inches, seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents per ton. And type three binders, sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents per ton. Darrell Gravel and Contracting for both type six, one and a half and two inches is eighty-seven dollars and ninety cents per ton. And for type three binder, eighty-one dollars and ninety cents per ton. Whereas village staff fines for Elmyre Road Materials LLC in amount of seventy dollars and thirty cents per ton laden place type six top. And sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents per ton laden place type three binder to be complete and correct. And supports an award of a of a construction contract for the twenty twenty-four street program of the Village of Horseheads and recommends such award. And whereas Elmyre Road Materials LLC has been found to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for this project. Now therefore be resolved by the Village of Horseheads Board of Trustees as follows. The above recitals are true and correct and are incorporated into this resolution by reference. The village board awards the contracts Elmyre Road Materials LLC for the twenty twenty-four street program. Village manager Nathan Abel is authorized to expand funds in amount not to exceed the budgeted funds for the vote program. Village manager Abel is authorized to enter into a contract with Elmyre Road Materials LLC. For the above program and to take any and all action necessary to implement this resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Bethany Mayer-Goodwin.
Aye.
Trustee Gross.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
Aye.
Trustee Benabrock.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
All right, we move on to item seven. And that's the PUD amendment for the Orchard Homes Phase Two. Nate, if I have the correct understanding of this, this resolution's merely to set the public hearing for the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, correct. And just as a matter of record, we are doing this through resolution with the board, but you, just as a. Point of reference, you do have the authority to set this on your own.
I do, but since we've got the time to do it, we're letting the board set this one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about just setting the public hearing, which is solely this?
No, sir.
All right, let's read. I'm sorry, Hannah. Can you please read the resolution?
Whereas Bethany Retirement Home, as the owner of real property commonly known as three zero zero five Watkins Road, Horseheads, New York. Tax map parcel forty-eight dot sixteen dash one dash two point two. And whereas the property is a portion of an approved planned unit development, PUD. And whereas the applicant through its related entity Orchard Homes Development LLC. Has applied to the Village of Horseheads for an amendment to the PUD to allow for development and construction of six duplex senior living apartments. For in twelve separate living units located on a private access road connecting with Apple Ridge Drive. And whereas applicable such changes with this substantive amendment to the PUD. And whereas amendments to the PUD are subject to review and approval of the Village of Horseheads Board of Trustees after a public hearing. Now therefore be resolved that a public hearing regarding said application is hereby scheduled for Thursday, June sixth, twenty twenty-four at six oh five PM. At Village Hall and by listing application. And furthermore, that clerk treasurer Donna Dawson shall cause posting of notification of a notice of such hearing as required by.
So move. Roll call, vote.
Bethany Mayer-Goodwin.
Aye.
Trustee Gross.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
Aye.
Trustee Benabrock.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
All right, we move on to item eight, which is the updated PTO resolution. Nate?
Really what this resolution does is it reflects what we actually discussed when we changed the multipurpose league program. On that particular night, we had presented the change going from an accrual of ten days. To a front load of ten days. And in conversation with the board that night, it was agreed upon to increase that to fourteen. So the materials that you received on that particular night were of ten days. This reflects the discussion that actually took place. And we felt it would be better that we made that change through resolution to what we actually discussed and approved on that particular night a couple of meetings ago.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, let's read the resolution.
Whereas Village of Horseheads has an employee handbook which contains various policies, rules, and regulations of the village affecting its employees. And whereas said handbook provides for multipurpose league section eight oh three for not unannounced employees hired on or after July first, twenty fifteen. To be credited to or earned by such employees after a certain period of continuous employment. And whereas village manager Abel has recommended to this board that both the date that such scheme is credited to an employee. Being changed so as to be credited approved based upon date of hire for detached schedule. Rather than being earned after a designated period of continuous service without changing rates at such due terms. And on the number of leaves of eight time holidays, which is fourteen, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-six days per year based upon years of service. And whereas village manager Abel provided this board with a draft of the proposed by section eight oh three. For this board's consideration reflecting these proposed changes. And whereas this board feels that there is merit in revising section eight oh three to increase the PTO to fourteen slash eighteen slash twenty-two slash twenty-six days accordingly. Now therefore be resolved that this board does hereby adopt proposed section eight oh three multipurpose league changes. To be enacted retroactive January first, twenty twenty-four. Manager Abel shall promptly further revise section eight oh three to reflect the above increase in number of days of PTO. And provide a copy of such revised section eight oh three as due to track. Said final revised section eight oh three shall be attached to these minutes.
So move.
Second.
Uh, roll call, vote.
Bethany Mayer-Goodwin.
Aye.
Trustee Gross.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
Aye.
Trustee Benabrock.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
All right. We now move on to water rules and regulations. Nate, you gave us this last meeting. Instructed us to read over it and have our answers. And I'll let you. Do your first presentation and then start with mine.
Really with the rules and regulations, we made several changes to to the regulations just in the update. The meat, the meat of it is appendix A and appendix B, which is, which are the rates. And those are reflective of the increases that are being proposed. Over this last couple of weeks, there were a couple of comments and questions that were delivered. Hopefully we answered those, for those that asked those questions the way you wanted them, have answered. And with that, we're just going to leave it there. John, would you like to add anything to the work that you did with the rules and regulations?
Thank you. I had difficulty unmuting myself. Thank you. Basically, the modification, there are. Operational changes also embedded in the draft rules and regulations. Those operational changes were largely developed at the request of village staff, including. Water department personnel and the clerk's office personnel in terms of. Operation and administration of the. in terms of, uh, operation and administration of the, uh, water department. The, we, uh, looked at, uh, a number of other, uh, water depart- municipal water departments with respect to, uh, some policies and procedures they had in place. In addition to that, there were, uh, updates due to changes in, uh, law and also changes in technology that were able to be incorporated into, uh, the revised draft. So the, the draft itself is probably, uh, a work that has occurred incrementally uh, over the last, hmm, probably last three or perhaps even four years, where a lot of input, uh, was developed. And then, uh, there would be periods of time where, where, uh, attention was focused on more pressing matters and then we would get back to these, uh, these draft rules and regulations. So, uh, your input's very important to, uh, to us, uh, your, you know, village staff as, at large. So, uh, we're hoping that the board has had an opportunity to, uh, review and digest, um, the changes that we are proposing, uh, obviously are changes that, uh, your staff is recommending to you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I noticed that we don't have a resolution for this. So will we have to vote on this or what's the procedure on this?
There, there, uh, there is a resolution, uh, that's available for your consideration. You do, as a board, need to act on it. It does not require, uh, a public hearing, nor does it require a local law. Uh, I'm not sure what, uh, you know, that, I know that, yep, I know that the rates have been, the water rates have been under discussion and consideration for quite some time. Uh, I don't know what Nate is recommending with respect to, uh, the board's action on this resolution. So that's something that he and Donna can speak to directly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I would like to go through, um, the questions part and have a discussion on as far as what we see, um, bit by bit. I'd like to have the trustees go to article seven point one. That is the rendering of bills and adjustments. Uh, when this was presented to us, uh, Nate asked us to have, it's, it's the resolution.
All right, thanks.
Um, in that, Nate, you asked us, uh, as the board to come up with a suggestion on, to read verbatim here, the village clerk slash treasurer is authorized to correct and adjust any disputed charges not exceeding blank for good cause shown, and the village manager is authorized to correct or adjust any disputed charges not to exceed for good cause shown. In my opinion, I am recommending that those amounts for the clerk and treasurer should be set at two hundred and fifty, and for Nate, five hundred. I believe that this tiering of those two levels would allow for, in the future, a primary or a first tier for the water clerk or something in the future. But I feel and feel that the people in this role, regardless if it's Donna or Nate, if capable of holding this job, that the amounts of two hundred and fifty and five hundred are well within their scope of work that they do beyond just this. Does trustees have any questions, comments, and concerns about that aspect? We move to schedule B. Some of these fees that are being presented here, I found to be exceedingly low. And let me, uh, go on record saying that, starting with the customer request for shut off at the schedule. To let everybody know, this is not just us, the water department going out to turn off the water, but also including the water department going out to the curb stop to turn said water back on. Now, we know that it's scheduled, so it does happen within our normal hours of operation. Philosophically, I believe that every resident's water bill. And thankfully, I sit with four other trustees who also share those same water bills. Our water bills pay for the overall maintenance of the system. And at any time that a resident receives an individualized service, they and the rest of a hundred percent of the rest of the residents do not receive said service. And by doing so, and logically speaking, the people of the system that do not get that service are subsidizing and paying for the people who do get the service. So for me philosophically, charges such as what's apparent here in schedule B allows us to individually charge a user and not have to put that cost on the rest of the system. So with that being said, for the first one, for the customer request for shut off, I'm re- I'm moving to have that put at fifty dollars. With that fifty dollars acting as a baseline for all fees, I have, um, much concern about the section for delinquent account charges. Having a conversation with trustee Kowalski, um, actually, you know what? I'm gonna go right from the source here. Donna, what is the labor that goes in from the village for, at the moment that a account becomes delinquent?
Well, it starts in the clerk's office with the, uh, administration of, you know, following up, doing the letters, um, mailing the letters out, um, both reduce what, sixty-eight cents, um, a piece now. Then once the letters are, are mailed out, then there's the, the calls and the follow-up from, from the residents. Once they, the due date expires and they haven't paid their water bill, then we have to,
The new due day.
The new due day.
Yes.
Uh, the, the deadline, if you know. Uh, then we have to send the water staff out to turn the water off. Usually requires, you know, usually one time, but sometimes it's two times or more because there's people that are on there quite often and the, the shut-off valve is worn off or they might have to go out on the day now, um, a shut-off valve that they haven't been able to do before. And, um, and then after that, then it's, you know, having a page, pagey, uh, delinquent sale and so is turn-on fee and then having the guy go out and shut it up, turn it back on. So it is, it is a whole area.
So trustees, with that same philosophy that I explained with the customer request for shut off, that is, in, for a lack of a better term, an individual service that, that user is getting that the rest, if we don't charge appropriately for, the rest of the users are paying for that with just what Donna said. So at that level, with the scale we have here, delinquent account charge of fifty dollars, and I'm recommending to move to a hundred and fifty. Consistent delinquent account charges move from a hundred to two hundred and fifty. And delinquent account turn-on fee would be a hundred and fifty. This is not a normal action as we have to consider a delinquent account triggers multiple departments and multiple wages to facilitate what would be classified as a delinquent action.
Could you give some sort of warning there? I'm just thinking if somebody's delinquent, money might be a little bit snug. You hate to hit them with a hundred and fifty dollar fee if things are tight.
What is, do we have a, a warning syst- do we have a warning beyond what they get with the bill right now?
Yes, the delinquent letters that we set out.
So can you explain the timeline on that?
About ten days.
So they get the normal warning of what the bill will cost? And then they, we go past?
Yeah, and then they have the penalty fee and then we, we do the delinquent letters about two weeks after their due and then they still get official ten days after.
So that, with that penalty fee calculated in there, that could be anywhere, that's like a month to two months of, because there's that, pay this, and then the penalty is included on there. That's how, that's thirty days in there. So from the time somebody gets a bill to a delinquent charge being assessed to the, to that, how approximately, how many days do they have?
It's forty-five. And it would have to be, it has to be a six-month bill. That is to pay, yeah, not pay two bills. So it's, they have to pay, if they didn't pay the bill that was due December fifteenth and then, and now it's due March fifteenth, they might have to have not paid those two bills in order to hit the delinquent, uh, program.
They, they do not hit the delinquent program or the delinquent list until six months.
So there is a safety net in place already?
Yeah.
Correct. So, uh, user gets six months before a delinquent charge is assessed.
Correct. Plus, Two billing periods.
On the bills, it also says non-payment of, um, consecutive water bills results in fifty-dollar delinquent fee.
So we warn them at the beginning of the bill being issued?
Yeah.
Every bill has it. Now, I, I throw this out there on because it's a conversation that we have, that we have in the office. At our current figure, uh, we generate ten thousand plus or minus a year in delinquent fees. So is the intent of increasing the fees to dis- discourage getting on the delinquent list? Because right now we have people that don't mind paying the extra fifty dollars. Is that, is that a fair statement?
It is fair.
Nate, overall, the water operation has ended in a negative balance, correct?
Yes.
And how many years has it, has operated in a negative balance? Just?
Three, four, five?
Okay, so we have operated in a five regardless of a ten thousand dollar overage. And we know with the Siskiyouhanna River Basin study saying that, and guys there again, uh, qualified that you guys are doing an amazing job turning that leakage rate around, that there's still a lot of work that needs to be done hence for the revenue, the increase in rates that was approached by last year's board that didn't take place. And now we're looking to also make that right in this year's, uh, budget as well. So trustees, I throw it to your discussion as far as where my prices are.
Other question, how many current delinquent accounts are there? I, how many current delinquent accounts do we have?
Well, there was, there was about twenty-five, but right now, current, there's probably about four that still have to pay. We just went through the process, that's why there's only that many.
And it's usually the same accounts.
As I say, same accounts, yeah.
The charging.
If we've gone through the first warning, we're up to warning thirty-seven, they still haven't paid their fill, does that then go on to the landlord to pick up that difference or it's to the resident of who it's, of the, of the metering?
They, uh, it depends on everyone's lease. You know, some, some people are, are renting and the, 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 the water bill, some people, the landlord. But the ultimate responsibility is the landlord. So if the tenant moves out and they, they moved out with a three hundred dollar, well, good one, no, it's a little problem, three hundred dollar water bill that's due, it's the landlord that ends up having to pay it.
Personally? I think it's awful cheap on delinquent accounts. I mean, especially if it's repeat customers. Apparently it's not hurting them too badly if they say, eh, I'm not gonna pay it again, you've got to go through all your paperwork. I'd rather see those numbers moved up to two fifty and five hundred. It's like, let's make it so it hurts, I'm sorry. It's, if, if they really don't care, that doesn't faze, uh, you know, the scheduled customer turnoff, as I was talking with Donna, most of those are snowbirds, people that are leaving for the winter coming back. And I don't see a real burden on us for that. But for the delinquent accounts, it's just, if it's repeat customers, I'm not a nice guy sometimes.
So trustee Kowalski, you're recommending, to be clear, for the delinquent account charge and delinquent account turn-on fee, we move that to two fifty each and then for the consistent delinquent account charge, which is three or more charges within an eighteen-month period, to move that to five hundred.
That would be my personal. And for turn-on fee, I would move that up to one fifty.
The delinquent turn-on fee?
Yeah.
Any objections to that, trustees?
I have no objections, but I certainly hope we're gonna publicize it well.
And that, and to your point, trustee Gross, um, dipping into what I do, I did, um, in my full-time job, it will be my, um, preference that with the first bill with the new rates that go out to include, um, messaging, maybe even in addition to the bill itself, um, explaining multiple things. The base rate going up, why the, what are we doing with those rate increases? And also very explicitly explaining why and what the schedule B charges are.
And I think the newsletter might be another good place for it too, and big bull letters on the front.
Right. I think what's most effective is the moment that a user opens up their bill.
Yes.
Is having that information timely and right there.
Right.
So yes, we can definitely include it in the newsletter, but I don't see anything more timely. So Nate, if we can, on when we do the first round bills with this set of increases, if I can, um, create a little insert to go into that explaining what and how we're doing with that, that would be appreciated. And I will put that in front of all the trustees for review and have that authored by all of us if that's okay.
Well, that would not be your communication, it would be coming from our offices.
Our what?
But you can, you can read the draft if you wish to.
But are we, so is there an issue with putting, we, so I could, we could direct the manager to put in?
What, what I'm saying is, the board will not necessarily create the communications staff will do that. But we can definitely run that past you to see if this is the language that you want to have used.
Okay.
May I, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
May I just throw it to Donna and to Nate, do you think that's extreme, what I'm proposing?
It, it's a, it's a heck of a,
For, for me, I agree. For me, it comes down to, is the philosophy to prevent people from going on the delinquent list? Or is it the philosophy, because what we, what we are generating from delinquent is, like I said, roughly ten thousand a year. If the idea is to increase these fees to where they're no longer on the delinquent list, then maybe we don't have that additional revenue in delinquent fees. Or it will take fewer people on the delinquent list to generate those same fees because you've now, uh, increased them by a couple hundred percent.
With that being said, a good analogy is your credit card, you don't pay it, it's through your, well, it's what, fifty bucks now, like credit card fee? I think it's excessive. I would like to know what the, um, our water board does. They're a lot bigger than we are here in the village, as far as our water department, and know what Big Class does. I know I can make decisions, this table can make decisions for our water department, but I still like to reflect off what, what our fellow communities are doing.
Well, how do you discourage people from doing this except hitting them with a magic book? I mean, yeah, like I said. Do I think it's fun to do that? No, but still. Is it fun for our people to go through the paperwork, the time, and have these same?
Well, I think it's a waste of time for our employees, but no matter what type of business you have, you're always gonna have delinquent payers. If it's credit cards or if we sold car tires, there's always delinquencies. And I just, I think it's a kind of excessive. That's my own personal opinion.
Shelby, Donna, share yours and Donna, I want you to.
Sorry, I'm delinquent for the delinquent. Um, I, I think, I, I think that that is a lot. Um, I like Kevin's number a little better just because there are, I, and I also agree with you Nate, are we trying to stop these people from keeping on the list? Or are we, you know, gonna keep the delinquent charges? I don't know. I don't, I think that's a lot of money.
So a lot of.
Some of them complain about fifty dollars, so I think we'll be both.
I'd like to know exactly how much it costs to run the water department.
Yes.
And then look at the fees that we're charging, are they over, are they under? I mean.
Well, and Pat, we talked about that, that we're operating in a deficit for the last five years.
These are just about the delinquent accounts. This doesn't take care of the day-to-day fees.
Right.
Schedule A takes care of your day-to-day fees.
Right.
All right.
Um, I'm sorry, Donna.
On our water, whatever's on the site, seventy-five dollars to, to have your, uh, water turned back on if it's turned off because it's delinquent. Um, I'm looking, I'm looking for a, um.
Did you have it turned off? Is that what she said?
Yeah. That's what it is to turn it back on.
Uh, to turn it back on?
Yeah, it's seventy-five.
Three, three percent fee, uh, penalty fee if you're one delay. Um, seven days after the penalty fee is added to your, um, to your account, uh, you get a notice mailed to you with a ten dollar, ten dollar charge when you get the notice. And then the payment must be, be made within fourteen days to avoid, uh, interruption of service.
So fourteen days, not sixty?
Yes.
Okay.
Or six months.
Or six months. Oh, six months.
Yes.
Okay. Um, to answer manager Nagel's question, I want to be very clear. I think in this, this isn't social justice in trying to raise the rate to the point where we're discouraging late. That is between the user and their, and their circumstances. This is back, in my opinion, the philosophy that we need to be, we need to be made whole for the extra work that's going into these accounts for somebody who's paying their bill in a timely manner. We also need to be made whole on the fact that six months of a bill in somebody else's pocket is not money in the water system's pocket, which also carries a holding fee on that. Trustee Finifrock?
I like your numbers. Uh, are these repeat people? Over and over and over again?
Most of them.
Most of them?
Yeah, they, yeah, we'll, we'll get into, um, like new owners, people who just bought, bought a house and they called us, tell us that, you know, the, the bill needs to be changed. Or tenants that moved in now, like they were caught in the fray. But for the most part, the rest of them are, are repeat.
Mostly landlords? Mostly landlords?
Yeah, most of them are, are rental properties, right? Yes, yes.
Go through your numbers. The six-month thing though, they can go six months without.
It, it's because our billing process is ever, it's quarterly. So that's the reason of the six months, but maybe we can, I don't know what we can do to.
And then they pay.
Yeah.
So I got a question. If you're gonna have somebody come to your house, I've had somebody come to my home, a plumber, give you the water turned off, turned back on, and then have replaced the valve in the basement. Am I gonna pay the same amount that on and off to somebody that's delinquent?
No.
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 And that's.
Or than likely, that'd be a schedule.
That would be scheduled because it wouldn't be emergency. And that also, deputy mayor, is why I feel that we have to have that conversation because if we stayed with the original delinquent amounts, those two actions would cost now even.
Yes.
And hence why moving from fifty to the, the one fifty, the two fifty, and the one fifty after that, more than separates what uh, intentional scheduled turnoff is than from a delinquent with all that other work process that goes into it from there. If I get, if I read the consensus from the board, are we okay with the one fifty, two fifty, one fifty? Well.
And I think, to answer your question on that six-month thing, it is because we just built, built quarterly, yeah, it, the only way to reduce that would probably to be bill more often. And it costs more money to bill.
Correct.
Correct.
Moving on to initial meter installation inspection. This includes the supply of the meter, the remote pad materials that are owned by the village. Can you give more explanation into what is all wrapped up in that inspection fee?
Um, it's the meter, meters you're running are about one forty-seven, one forty-seven, one fifty on the meter right now. Uh, that is purchased by the homeowner or purchased by the developer. And then as far as the inspection, it's really just a matter of us going and making sure that everything's attached properly. Uh, that the, as far as the meter itself is concerned. We do not do the installation.
Okay.
Uh, all that we do is go to the site and say, yep, the wire's hooked up properly. Uh, the MXU box is on the side of the house, everything's connected, and that's the extent of the inspection.
So the one fifty is paid separate to this two twenty-five?
Uh, no, it's included into that. The meter's included in two twenty-five.
So for seventy-five dollars, the village owns the remote reader pad? There's other stuff, okay.
Yeah, for that seventy-five dollars, we're stopped again, everything looks good, we're out. Five to ten minutes tops.
Seventy-five, not including the remote reader pad? You said the hundred and fifty's only for the supply of the meter, correct? Or is, is the hundred and fifty in addition? Okay, does not include the remote reader pad?
No, it's in there. The meter and the remote reader pad. That, it's all owned by the village.
So when you said it's a hundred and fifty dollars, that's the cost to the village for the meter and the remote reader pad?
Correct.
Okay, that's both things in there. And so the difference between the amount and how much we pay. Okay, so thank you Nate, that was explained to me. So trustees, my recommendation on that, as far as also an inspection, back to the idea that this is an individualized service, setting up, not paying, needing, that's taking more resources out of the general maintenance. I'm recommending just to move from two twenty-five to two fifty with an idea of a hundred dollars is the assessment on the scheduling and the actual inspection. Do we have any concerns about that? Last in schedule B is the emergency call-out fee after normal hours and weekends. On this is two hundred and fifty. Now Nate, can you walk us through the expenses of our, of what's contracted for somebody, for one of our employees to do an emergency call-out?
So after hours, minimum it's gonna be four hours labor.
At time and a half?
At time and a half. Um, depending on the situation, maybe it's two, maybe it's three. All depends on what the emergency is. For the most part, what, what occurs is we have a break on the service, on the residential side of the service. And so what we're doing is we're going out and we're shutting off the water at that point. Letting, letting them know it is an issue that they have to, to address, hire a plumber, excavator, whatever they need to do, fix it, and then we turn it back on. Okay, uh, there are other occasions where it might take two people. But that kind of depends, again, most of the time on this, it's gonna be one person going out and shutting the water off to the house because the house or the service to the house has a leak and it's from their curb stop to the house.
Would they have to pay again for the turn-on?
Uh, how, how do we tip, do we do the turn-on or we?
Usually.
Just part of it.
Yeah.
So.
Because usually we'll be turning it on during day, during the workday.
After it's fixed.
After it's fixed, yes.
So I'm proposing moving from two fifty to three hundred, knowing that the minimum cost to the village is four hours of OT labor. So I, I would be willing to bet.
And that number's gonna go up each year based on contractual.
Right, right. And I would bet that with salary and fringe, we're not even making that bet. So there is something that I think we need to look at more thoroughly in the future, but for right now, I feel comfortable at the three hundred dollar level. Is there any comments, questions, concerns about that? Okay, and thankfully, last. One of the things that we, I noticed and what I saw during the campaign, and what we also saw when we went out and did the budget presentations, is that the Village of Horsetts water rate structure has this, um, cyclical type of plateau and hike. We defer, kick the can, whatever verb or phrase you wanna use. Boards don't wanna raise rates. Then we hit a wall and we are six years, five, six years in the hole with our water system, and then we jack those rates up. There is no win with that. In my opinion, that is poor, that is poor governance and that is poor foresight and strategic planning. What I am asking the trustees to do is agree, or I'm proposing, is that in the water regulation rates, I want to include a water rate, a statutory increase every calendar year of three percent. What this will do is level out those plateaus and hikes that we're seeing right now. You're living under this regulation right now. It's a thirty percent increase in water rates with a twenty-five percent increase for mostly our commercial rates. That is because we haven't touched the rates since two thousand seventeen. I don't see any other, other, I don't see any other options than trying to do the plateau with an enormous hike or try to smooth that curve out and do things thoughtfully and strategically, which would be an incremental increase year after year. And that is why I ask the trustees for their opinions on an annual water rate of three percent.
Well, let's say you go, we do that, ten years from now, the water from today is gone thirty percent. Are, what's gonna happen with, as far as our infrastructure? Are the taxpayers gonna get hit there?
With another hike?
Yeah.
Yeah, another steep hike, yep. Thank you, Bill.
What's your forecast there? I mean.
I think it's, I think you wanna level out that curve. I think there's no, you know, I think to try and look at the, you know, the mistakes of the sewer district and what, you know, we see on, on that admin board. You know, no investment, no, okay, we're paying well below subpar rates. And then, okay, now we have that immediate correction that sends, and to the impact of the resident, I wanna put the resident first. Especially with this, a res, a rate is paid by everybody. People who pay on time, people who don't pay on time. For the people that do pay on time, to get hit with that thirty percent or that dramatic swing is gonna be much harder for them than seeing that incremental increase that they can prepare for. And it's the first time we can say as a board, it's a new board, so we can always say it's the first time, but it's one of the first times, I believe, that from this board, we can say, we're making the decision to look long-term in what that water rate is.
What was the increase in two thousand seventeen, the last rate increase? Three percent, four percent?
Uh, that what we just increased it a dollar?
Okay, we just, we just did a dollar. I don't know.
Increase the minimum.
Yeah, I think we just increased the minimum to a dollar. So whatever that percent was, I think we just did a dollar.
Twenty-eighty-two, twenty-one eighty-two, thirty.
It's your way to, uh.
That'll get you a little bit faster. Yeah. I mean, i- i- and this is a conversation that the mayor and I have had, um, extensively. Okay, um, as water commissioners, we are to look at the rules and regulations on an annual basis. Part of that review is rate increase. One of the things that I have talked about is be cautious of the automatic three percent increase to where, hey, it's three percent, we don't have to look at the rules and regulations because it's automatically gonna be there. Conversely, okay, we've taken a look at it, we've decided not to make the increase. So it has its, you know, again, which side do you wanna look at it, type of a thing? Um, the other aspect of it is, we have to be prudent as well. Not only in the not raising of rates and doing minimal with our infrastructure, but also raising rates and still doing nothing with our infrastructure. And so right now, I guess to piggyback and even disagree to some extent, is that we hold off on that three percent escalating each year until we actually develop plan, get a better feel for what our expenses are on an annual basis, so that we can then match our revenues on that annual basis as well. Right now, what I'm telling you is, we don't have that plan. Other than, we just put five million dollars into the system, and we've gotta pay back two million. Right? Is the plan in four months, now when we close out the current project, are we gonna go for another five million to do more with the system? We have not had that conversation. So not that I disagree with what the mayor is indicating, so that we have those monies and it's established a three percent and the residents know what that figure is. Uh, I just want to be cautious that we don't get lazy the other way. And say, there's the three percent automatically, so we don't have to look at the rates because they're going up. That's, and that's all that I'm sharing for your discussions and for your, your opinions and thoughts.
And where I appreciate, where I, and I, and I do share the same concerns as Nate. What I see as the three percent is a minimum. That is, our rates are so low, we talk about a rate, three percent is a relative term on the basis of where the rate is absolutely. And the rate is absolutely three percent. Or what I'm proposing is a rate, an absolute increase of three percent based on where the rate is right now. We, yes, we can say that if we put this in, we'll be less diligent in looking at the rules and regulations, but we have history, multiple decades of history of showing that history is repeating itself. And that is defer, 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 oh crap. Where I believe putting this in shows a statement and shows good faith on the board's part to say, at a minimum, we need to keep three percent. What we wanna do, in addition to infrastructure, I can assure everybody at this table and every resident, I will not lose focus on continuing to write the infrastructure of the water system, is to say at a minimum, I'm saying, I feel good with knowing that we're gonna need a minimum three percent on that regardless of what. So to your point, deputy mayor, we might come up with an additional increase sometime after that three. But what I love about this is having that three percent every year will not completely eliminate the possibility of having to do an additional rate hike. It will hedge that, that we don't have to do such an, a quick thirty percent or something that we see in this budget right here.
Well, if that three percent have only happened. You know?
No, minimum bill, uh, seventy cents.
Seventy cents, that'd be.
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-one eighty-two is a minimum bill for, for three months, so three percent then is right seventy cents.
Well, yeah, but we're gonna be going up to twenty-eight thirty-seven. So it'd be three percent on twenty-eight thirty-seven, whatever that number is.
Yes, please, Donna, thank you.
None of us do math in our head anymore.
Pound of man.
Eighty-five cents.
Eighty-five cents is what we've been discussing. On a quarterly basis, in all fairness, and try, yes, so that, if you wanna multiply that by four, we're about three dollars and fifty cents. Yeah. Do we have any thoughts, feelings, concerns about the three percent?
You know, part of that three percent away, I see it helps cover the costs of employees. Chemical costs are going up every year, material costs are going up every year. And, and that's what that three percent would be doing is those day-to-day.
And, and that's what that three percent would be doing, is those day-to-day expenses that increase. Yeah, because also in this proposal is a fourteen dollar per quarter, per account, that's gonna be going for the capital projects.
So, to tell everybody in attendance, not only does the rates go up by thirty percent, but for each quarter on each account, we're assessing a fourteen dollar flat charge. That fourteen dollar charge will create two hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Now, where does that two hundred thousand dollars go? Right off the bat, half of it goes to cover the five million that was already accepted by the village for the Wia project. So, we need a hundred thousand dollars, stop me if I'm wrong, we need a hundred thousand dollars a year for many, many years to cover the bond, to pay back the two million. So we really didn't get five million from the state, we got three million from the state, but the state likes saying five instead of three. So now, we have, the village has an obligation of paying back the two million. So, seven dollars per each account each quarter just goes to pay back something that did roughly five percent of the overall system. And then the other hundred thousand is what you're looking at to, for the first time ever, to be able to put water fees to start improving infrastructure and capital within the infrastructure from us.
Correct, yeah, so this, this hundred thousand or this additional hundred, hundred thousand would be either something that we would either do in-house, or we would contract out ourselves. Maybe it's replacing a line, maybe it's replacing valves, maybe it's, you know, whatever the case might be. And that, and that's the plan that we need to establish, as to what, what's next on the plan.
Which is not part of this eighty-five cents a quarter, three percent.
Would it be fair to say, Nate, that for our audience, for the taxpayer, that the five million dollars that he make it down in our water system?
I mean, if you're, if you're looking at it percentage-wise and linear footage-wise, it was very minimal. But it also replaced the oldest portion of our system. It replaced a lot of our hundred-and-fifteen-year-old fire hydrants. So in that aspect, I'm gonna say, yes, it was very beneficial. But if you're looking at it as percentage based on linear footage, yes, it was a very small percent. But I'm looking at it as in, it upgraded the oldest part of our water system. And we, and we took a lot of our main lines from two to a minimum of eight. You know, that, that kind of worked, so.
Thank you, Ben.
Um, at the last meeting, I think we discussed possibly looking for some grant monies for the water system to, to improve it or replace it or whatever we're gonna do. Are we going ahead on that?
We'll still be doing that.
Okay.
But, but as you know, every grant is, costs the village something. And, and what I mean by that, just like this five million dollar grant that we received, we're paying back two million out of that five. So the next five million dollar grant, we're gonna pay two million on that one.
All right.
The, the hundred percent grant.
To at least look at it.
Oh, yeah.
Because if we don't get the grants, then you've got five million dollars right there.
You got three million right there.
Right, well, three in addition.
Three is the net, cuz we still have to pay back two million of it anyway.
Yeah, the, the, there, there is no one-hundred percent grants.
Okay.
They, they just, they don't exist.
Okay.
Um, and we're fortunate to get in on the system that, uh, that the grant actually paid for sixty percent. I would imagine the next one's probably gonna drop to fifty percent and work its way down.
So, but we are proceeding, uh, going ahead with that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, and there's still a big push, uh, for the state to create a CHIPS-like program for the water system. And I understand the dilemma that the state is having, is they're trying to figure out how to be fair with all the municipalities, where, where with CHIPS, every municipality has a road that needs repair, or every, every municipality has a road. Not all municipalities have water systems. So they're trying to figure out from their side. But again, it's a push that we can continually do with the state, maybe someday they will create such a program, but that program does not exist, and therefore, water operation owners are responsible for their own water system.
You know, the ironic part of this whole discussion is, we are very fortunate to receive a quality product every day out of our caps, and we're talking about eighty-five cents a quarter. And we sit here buying bottles of water that we don't think twice about paying a dollar a piece, two dollars a piece, if you want, a French one, maybe three dollars a piece. And so, really?
Right, I'm gonna say, really?
If there's not, if, if the trustees have no other objections, can we move with this proposed, with this proposed rates listed? Anna gave you as much time as possible to regain your, oh, sorry, oh, we got more time for you, keep it up.
All right. John, are you still with us? What, I, I guess what I'm going to.
Yes, I'm still with you.
Okay.
A couple of comments, with respect to the fees, not the rates, but the fees that are, you, you talked about on Schedule B. The general principle of government is that there's supposed to be a, a direct relationship between the fees that you're charging and the cost of providing the service that you're charging. In other words, you're not supposed to make it a high-profit source. Now, that's not to say that municipalities don't do it, uh, and it's not to say that it doesn't happen from time to time. But the idea of, of making it punitive uh, is not a, is not a term that you wanna use loosely. So, it's, it is, uh, it, it should, clearly, it should cover the costs of the service that you're providing. Uh, and yes, there are a lot of ways of calculating the cost, including, you know, administrative costs, and, uh, like in any business, there's O and M that is part of the, uh, cost recovery calculations. Um, but in, again, going toward the, I, concept of two fifty to discourage people from, you know, becoming, you know, consistently delinquent or five hundred or whatever, along those lines, uh, probably becomes punitive and therefore be, it, it would be, um, subject to, uh, criticism if it were, if it were delved into, that's all. And, and in terms of the fees that you talked about, um, I think it would be helpful, for me anyway, if, if you were to go through those fees collectively after, now that you've discussed them, you know, identify the fee on that Schedule B and what it is that, that this board is comfortable with. For example, when you've got the emergency call-out fee, uh, it was my understanding that the board had, came to a general consensus of three hundred dollars for that. Is that correct?
That is correct, correct.
Okay, and, and with respect to the next item on that Schedule B, the customer request call-up, it was my understanding that the board came to a consensus of fifty bucks for that.
Correct.
Okay, and as far as the delinquent account charge, uh, it's my understanding that the board came to a consensus of two fifty for that?
Hundred and fifty.
One fifty, okay, thank you. Uh, the next item, consistent delinquent account, what was the?
Two fifty.
Two fifty?
Mm-hmm.
And, and the delinquent account turn-on fee?
One fifty.
One fifty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and they, the initial meter charge, uh, or fee, two fifty?
Two fifty.
Uh, okay, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
John, with the discussion that took place, in your opinion, was there, is the resolution that we have still available to us? Or with the discussion, in particular with the three percent each year, should we relook, take another look at the rules and regulations, put tonight's discussion into the rules and regulations, and then look at this for resolution at the June meeting? Or do you feel that, uh, the changes in the discussion were not significant enough to change your resolution for tonight?
Um, they, I guess it's the board's, uh, preference, one, one question is, in my mind, at least, the resolution that, that I drafted, uh, provided for essentially the effective date of the rules and regulations, that would be the words that we're talking about. Uh, and then, uh, there was a question in my mind as to when, uh, the water rates uh, were to be instituted. I mean, I don't know what kind of time, for example, you know, you've got meter readings and, uh, administrative functions that need to be performed in order to implement the rate change, and I don't know what kind of lag time, uh, you know, village staff felt was needed in order to accomplish that. Whether it's something that, I mean, if we had the resolution effective today, then the water rates become, uh, are changed effective tomorrow. Do you have the capacity to do that?
John, they're discussing that right now.
All right, so we're, we're going through a process right now for the, for this next quarter, where the bills will be mailed out, May fifteenth?
Around May fifteenth.
All right, so that's within, within two weeks. The next billing cycle would be August.
So what, so when, whatever you're comfortable with, Nate?
Well, I don't think we're gonna get the new rates in, in the system in two weeks.
So what would that date be effective of for the next cycle?
Well, I mean, you could, you could make it effective June one, it'll be after this billing cycle, or you can make it July one, either way, we're, we're working that regard.
I'm good with June one. All right, June one.
All right, why don't you guys, uh, proceed with your deliberations on other matters, and I'm gonna look at the resolution that I prepared and the content of your discussion, and see if it, uh, how, how challenging it'll be to incorporate your thoughts into the resolution that I drafted. So, if you will, let's, why don't you proceed and come, we'll come back to item nine. Is that okay?
That sounds great, John, we don't have a motion on the table, so we can just move on.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, now to get into something a little more upbeat. Request to harbor chickens, three-two-five-zero, South Main Street.
This is, this is not an uncommon request that we receive. Bob, Jamie, how many current harboring of chickens do we have in the village at this point? Eight, nine, somewhere in that neighborhood?
Somewhere between six and ten.
Okay.
How many, I'm sorry?
Six to ten.
Okay, thank you.
And, and that was just information for the trustees, so, yes.
I live at three-two-five-zero, and I'm requesting to have, for my personal use. Um, I understand, I've read the code, and allow, if approved, to have six, which is my plan. I have a yard for them that's penned in, pending a roof. And, um, I have a little coop that I'm setting, I'm trying to scoop around the yard so they can have access to some fresh grass if they want. That's it, and they, we've had chickens for twelve years, cuz I thought, I, this is my second attempt, I guess. I wrote a letter before, twelve years ago, and I didn't hear anything back, so I just said, oh, no, this is good news, and I was like, on my merry way. But apparently, I was mistaken, so this is my second attempt to have chickens in the coop.
Jennifer, you have three acres
Yeah.
of your property?
Yeah.
And we look at that, how you have that sketched, it is well back from the road.
Oh, yeah.
Right, as you like. Yep.
Like, you couldn't see it kind of through my neighbor's yard, but not from the front.
And not all completely above board, you have some experience raising chickens.
I have.
I, I have, I have no further, further questions or comments for this resident except to, to say, yes. Just, oops, I slipped that out. So, what, any discussion for this property at three-two-five-zero, South Main Street?
I mean, I do have chicken friends, like, I'm in town, but I, I ask questions too, and I'm online in chicken groups, so I have immunity, if I have a problem, I'm not like, I don't know what to do, like, I, there's people I ask.
Sounds good. Um, when we do this, Nate, do we do it like a special use permit? Do we let the neighbors around know, or that's not applicable to this?
They've, they've been notified, they've already been sent.
I actually turned in a letter from, from three of them.
Okay.
They signed, by three immediate. I didn't go like across the street, cuz I didn't know how far I had to.
Right, well, thank you. That's, no. No, that's fine. Trustees, do we have any comments, questions, or concerns?
I have none.
I have none.
I say with very esteemed, Anna, read the resolution.
Rancher, all under three-two-five-zero, South Main Street, has applied for approval under the village's animal control law permission to harbor chickens. And whereas this board has reviewed your request and advised the applicant that should grant approval for the applicant, such permission is applicable on circumstances as are outlined in Article eighty and Local Law Number Six of two thousand and five. And whereas the applicant has indicated that they have no intention and will not harbor roosters or operate a commercial enterprise from that location, now therefore be resolved that the applicant is granted approval for the following conditions. One, no roosters will be harbored or maintained at the site. Two, no more than six hen shall be harbored or be kept in place. Three, the enterprise shall not be operated as a commercial venture. Four, the coop will be placed onsite at the location indicated on the survey provided by the applicant, is subject to future review by the sport, and permission can be revoked if ordered.
So, roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Hi.
Trustee Rose.
Hi.
Trustee Paul Woski.
Hi.
Trustee Ben Abra.
Hi.
Mayor Adams.
Hi.
The only thing I will tell you, you're gonna make a lot of enemies, because you're gonna have so many eggs that you've heard of, you're gonna come to the house of the bachelor, they're gonna say, oh, my God, not her.
She's been doing it for twelve years.
Egg bombs my neighbors, but they could never complain.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Enjoy. Uh, next is eight-two-four, South Main Street for Andrea, or is anyone present from this? Andrea, come on up if you don't mind. Oh, you guys are here as a neighbor? Neighbors, okay. Um, I will, so, we have the letter from the applicant. I assume, just, can you, what, just from my understanding, what does Code do as far as when an application like this comes in, as far as seeing if it's relevant and stuff?
They provide a certain plan, uh, plan on what they're gonna do with the property, the placement, uh, how they're keeping on intact, stay on the property and not going to neighbors' yards. Plan, placement, um, have them make the appeals to go forward, and then, uh, actually sketch out property map or drawing for, for your visual. And sometimes this is, when the GIS print pictures off for you, get a better, better view of it, or what it's gonna look like, and then present their package to the handler.
Is there any time that Code sees a reason not to permit the harboring of chickens? Or where you would have at least concerns? Let's leave it at that general.
Usually after the fact that the board approval, um, sometimes they have gotten on property, which was, the situation with thirty-two fifty, which you just approved, was actually a complaint that chickens had went off the property.
Flew the coop.
Pretty much, that's why she's looking for a loop.
Oh, I felt like Rob Maloney there for a second. Oh, oh.
So, that was a complaint, and then found out that permission was never given to have them, so, kind of working a little backwards on this one.
Thank you. Trustees, do we have any comments, questions, or concerns for?
Just curious as neighbors, Ken, um, Andrea, do you have any concerns yourselves, or?
Andrea's not here, these are just neighbors.
But being neighbors, if I'm being honest.
I have a lot of concerns. I live right next door to her, and since she moved in last August, it's been a nightmare. Code enforcement has fallen because it's just garbage was thrown all over. She's had two huge bins come that she had to clean up her yard. She's not home on the weekend, so who's going to take care of your animals on the weekends? Um, I work from home, from home all day. My office is right at the end, so I'm going to have to smell them, I'm going to have to deal with the noise, I'm on meetings all day, I train people all day on my computer. I just, I, I have animals, I mean, we're opening up the back raccoons, or even bears that are in other areas, why do we want to try to bring that into entry? I just, from working from home, I just don't think it's going to be a good idea.
And where, where do you live?
I'm at eight twenty, I'm right next door, our, our driveway's connected.
And I see her in that yard, and I don't think she can take care of these chickens.
No, she's got four kids.
She's got two dogs that are crazy.
They're loud, they bark, they're going nuts.
And I can't see them, and you can't hear chickens. I really don't.
Why isn't the applicant here this evening?
Yeah, that's what, I, I live at eight twenty-eight, and that was my question, why can't the applicant here to explain what she's going to do? Uh, code, I don't know. The previous owner is down at the south end of, uh, South Main Street, which is hugely different area-wise, and proximity of the houses, we live in an area up there where, in the eight hundred blocks, where the houses are right next to.
We all share driveways.
Yes, we share driveways.
Yes.
So, I firmly oppose that also, for the same reason, attracting maybe varmints. Would be up, we're very close to, uh, on the, on the east side of South Main Street, out across from the, uh, Newtown Creek is all overland, where we have heard coyotes.
There have been coyotes in, in your yards.
Yeah, really.
Um, guys, just as, as an order of decorum, because we do want to report all these, and we're getting minutes, so if we can do this in an orderly fashion, we, we got yours. So if the next neighbor could come up and just give us your address, and you don't have to come up to the phone, you just stand, and we want to speak one at a time. It's less discussion, but it's great for Hannah as far as trying to get the minutes. So, you, sir?
There was a bear, uh, out in my backyard. It's right, I live on the side of the creek, and there was a bear in fox, the lady that was next door to me was taking pictures of, in the middle of the night. Uh, just, that, just to see that, she sent them to me on Facebook and showed me, well, I was in the garage, and that, that bear was walking within well, ten feet of my garage.
And your address, sir?
Eight thirty-one.
Thank you.
On the east side, where the creek is behind me.
I'm at eight twenty-nine, South Main Street.
You're next door.
I'm next door, and I have, uh, at night, I know that there are coyotes, we're, the creek is right behind us. And so there's a lot of wildlife, I'm afraid the chickens are just going to bring them closer. Um, the, the raccoons are going to go after the eggs, we got, we got fisher cats, we got all this stuff. I don't want to attract anything else, chicken feed is going to bring more rodents. Uh, I, I don't want this to happen, and then find out later that, you know, we didn't say something, and now we've got a problem we can't deal with. There's a good reason why people don't have chickens in the village. There's got to be a reason why.
Well, right now it's against the law, that's, that's why we're going through the process.
But if there's a law against it, there must be good reasons why we shouldn't have chickens. I don't want to, I don't want to have a problem later. I don't want to, I mean, we have enough varmints around anyway. I think the chickens smell bad, we're close together. I, I don't want to walk down the street and smell them. She's got two big dogs already, so, I don't know, I just, I just don't want them.
Thank you for, oh, go ahead. About two years ago, we had, as part of the board, we had a home in Presidential Drive. That the applicant was, uh, here with a neighbor, and basically, um, I mean, you're talking, you know, Presidential Drive, it's not country-ish at all, if you would, right?
Big yards.
Yeah, and it got approved. Um, but I'm not sure what happens in a case where the applicant's not even here, but you've got four neighbors here complaining. All right, to move on, uh, sorry to have to repeat, but you can give me your address and your objections.
Uh, eight twenty-eight, South Main Street, you know, Harren, I basically oppose for the same reasons that my neighbors have. Um, in addition, we have children that are in the area that may be affected, both on the east side and the west side. Uh, and with the close proximity of the houses there, they're not spread out, they're regular lots, seventy-five feet lots. And it's just too close, they have a wildlife in the area, and, yeah, yeah, or farm angels. And to reiterate what the neighbors have said, that they have not kept that property up very well. It's pretty well true.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is, and, um, yeah, for those reasons, I oppose the fact of, the matter, and the fact that the applicant never showed up.
Thank you, if you, sir.
Eight twenty-six, South Main.
Good.
And I agree with everything these people say. It's just a mess, and they're not allowed to keep them on.
Have you had violations at this residence?
Yes.
I would, I appreciate, thank you for coming out and speaking, and, um, thank you, Trustee Kowalski, because going to move right into a resolution and move on, and we want to make sure every resident's voice is heard. Uh, if the trustees don't mind, I would ask, um, that one of the trustees, in my opinion, we need to get both sides to make an educated decision, let alone from, we need more information, let's see what the past has had from our information from our code department, but I think we need more time on this, and I would ask one of the trustees um, to offer a motion to table this resolution at this time.
Do you, and this is just my opinion, do you really think we need to table this? Um, Jennifer made a nice presentation, her packet was very nicely put together and everything. Andrea chose not to show up, number one. Looking at the map, folks, I really don't see where and how the yard is large enough to, to maintain this, plus on top of having another code violation, I I just see it creating a headache for us personally.
If the trustees want to put a motion, you know, we want a motion to vote this one down, and, yeah, that would be.
So, right, right now, the options are to table, to a meeting in the future, or read the resolution and vote, as, as you wish to vote.
If you guys want to proceed with the resolution, if you guys don't want to table, then we proceed with the resolution. So why don't we just ask this question, does the trustees want to table this? For more information. I'd like to table it, here, the other, the applicant's, uh, maybe there's an emergency, and she's going to make it tonight. To be fair, she can table.
I love she's on.
All right, always she?
She's on.
Regardless of that, we're, yeah, we're just going to say that, that she, she didn't attend. So, I think the question still stands, you know, if, if, if the trustees have a decision, yea or nay, I say we, you would, we can read the resolution and move forward. Or if you want to table, this is when you, we have one for tabling, do the other three. Trustee Gross, Trustee Finnefrock, do you have enough information in front of you that you want to make a decision, or do you want to table?
What were the code violations?
The most recent, there was a lot of junk and debris underneath the deck. Uh, I know she did bring in a dumpster, but then, I think it was four days of the, the violation of this. A lot of paint cans were left over, my understanding from a previous owner, she relocated those, because she was still trying to figure out how to properly dispose of, hang.
So I won't ask for your vote, but do you, would, do you have enough information to make a vote, or would you like to seek table?
I like to table it.
Trustee Gross.
I'd table it, so we can get more information.
So what we need is, we need somebody to make the motion to table for a future date, and pick that date, and then we would need a second, and then a roll call on that.
I'll make that motion, we table it, to a future date.
Would you like to, would you like to table it to the June sixth meeting, which is going to be our next meeting?
I think that would give the applicant enough time to get here, more enough time. Sure, may, may I just ask a question, though, before we go ahead with that vote? What other information are you or are we looking for?
I'm going to do a drive-by, I want to see what the property looks like.
You can come through my yard and be like.
Wait, well, okay, okay, we're gonna, we're, we're, yep, we're, we're done with public comment. You want, that's, that's your right.
And that's fine, if you're looking for more, make your legacy, I really, I'm curious what you're looking for.
Besides the drive-by. I just want to, maybe there was an emergency or something happened, to give the applicant one more time to show up, and that's not, I'm not saying I'm for it. I'm not saying I'm for it, I just want to give the applicant another chance, that's all, here, her side of the story. But that's not, not saying I'm voting either way. From what you're saying right now, I'd like to say the hell with it and not vote, but I'm a good guy, and I. All right, and Deputy Mayor, let's trust this, give it to the table.
Right now, you have a motion to table this to the June sixth meeting.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
And you have a motion and a second to table, uh, this portion of the harbored chickens of eight twenty-four, South Main Street, to June sixth. Uh, at this time, if there's no further discussion, it would be roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Aye.
Trustee Gross.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
No.
Trustee Finnefrock.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Nay.
Table chickens, or just come back next time, or?
So what a tabling will do is, yes, this will, if, if you so choose, the tabling will be this, this resolution will be put back in front of the board, and we will. Unless the board decides differently, I will strongly encourage the board to vote one way or the other. So, yes.
Would the, the agent first come and repeat this, or would that be a waste of your time?
Your comments will be in the minutes, so that will help.
Yeah.
Prevent the decision-making process. Well, by all means, you do, if you wish to come back, you're more than welcome.
Yes. All right. We can now move on to the fire department appointments. Nate, do you want to approach this?
Yeah. The fire department, uh, fire company had gone through their annual voting process. Uh, this resolution reflects the results of that, uh, voting process. Uh, US Fire Commissioners, uh, now have the, uh, authority to approve, if you wish, the results of that uh, voting process, which are located here in the resolution.
Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns about the slate of officers?
No, sir.
All right, let's read the resolution.
General, the general consent of the Horsehead Fire Department and the annual meeting of Horsehead Fire Commissioners held on April second, twenty twenty-four, and the members of same held an election at which time the following individuals received the votes, votes for nomination or appointment to their respective department or company offices. Chief Ryan Beal, Mueller, First Assistant Chief Joseph Reed, Second Assistant Chief Seth Zacco, Captain ten eleven Thomas Ewing, Captain ten twelve Troy Barcom, Captain ten thirteen Carlos Benitez, Lieutenant ten fourteen Justin Gross, Lieutenant ten fifteen Emel Valas, Lieutenant ten sixteen Michael Lauter, Mi- Lieutenant ten seventeen Michael Tr- uh, Truck, Lieutenant ten eighteen Michael Carpechak, Safety Officer ten nineteen Arthur Sullivan. Interacts the bylaws of the company and the rules and regulations of the department empower the board of fire commissioners to consider the nominations and appoint such persons to the offices to which they are nominated, and whereas this board has considered the nominees and the offices they are nominated to fill. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Horseheads Board of Trustees, acting as fire commissioners of the Horsehead Fire Department, does hereby appoint the above-mentioned individuals as officers of the department or company to hold the office noted effective immediately, and to remember in turn one year where till successor is appointed or vacancy otherwise occurs in such office.
It wouldn't be effective immediately, correct? It's June first?
Yeah, we can, we can make that adjustment.
You can make that adjustment. Thank you.
So moved. That's our thing.
Roll call vote. Aye.
Trustee Gross.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
Aye.
Trustee Finnefrock.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
We will.
Congratulations.
We will, we will amend this resolution to reflect June one, twenty-four.
And since that, we want to congratulate our new chief. I would like to call for a record why Bob Young didn't stand. That was very concerning. Is that that West Elmira thing, Bob? There's no rivalry in this room, I won't allow it. All right, while I'm still standing, it goes beyond saying, chief? Well, it's, I, it's beyond saying. I'm sure you'll make a fine safety officer, that's, I'm sure you'll do the job well, but um, no, I'm not going to speak for the board, the board has to speak for themselves, you, whatever we say cannot, as far as what you have done for the village and for firefighting in general. Thank you so much, chief, and we appreciate everything you've done, and continue to do. Thank you, chief.
As I've said many times, this is the best job I've ever wired. How I got it, it's not a good reason. But I've been proud of what I've done, and I'm proud that I made a decision that was my decision to step down. The fire department will go on, regardless of I'm there, regardless of Ryan's there, who's ever there, or in the past, all the people have been there. And I just feel it was time to step down, let new, new leadership take over. By all means, I'm going to be there right behind them as much or more, and help them all I can. They'll probably be sick of me, but but I, uh, that was my decision, uh, it's about eight years, I've taken, taken time to make this decision, I've talked about it, I've talked about it, and I said, no, we just got to deal with it, so.
Thank you, chief.
But, uh, the, uh, it, it's a, uh, it, it's a great feeling that I have people to take over, it's a great feeling that the board is supporting the fire department, because the fire department's just getting busier and busier. We thought last year that eight hundred calls, what are we estimating now?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred. So, it, uh, and to service the people and to help them, that's what we're here for, regardless of what your titles are, or what you do. You hear an alarm, you go up, and you try to help people, and that's what we do, and that's what we want to do. So, even though we're going to have, uh, a paid person to help us out, it's still going to need the support of the other forty members to do it. And, uh, that's important, and you as the trustees and the Village of Horseheads supporting us makes our job easier, so, I thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mrs. Sullivan, thank you for sharing with us for all of this. We appreciate it very much.
It is a debt of gratitude we have to you. If you need us to take them back, we will. The parks, the cemetery. I, okay. I, okay. All right, um, let's get through the announcement of the cancellation of the May sixteenth board meeting. That is just an announcement. Nate and I will be going to the annual meeting that you approved us to go to for NICOM, so we will not be having the May sixteenth meeting as Nate and I are not here.
Oh, you don't want us to do without you too?
It's because we don't trust you, Pat. That's it. I trust everybody else, but not you. So that's that's I'm right on record.
I had that feeling. I just checked.
Before we go to the trustee comments, let's do the let's do the add on.
Yeah, do you want to do the add on?
Uh, we'll we'll come back to John in a little bit. He he's still working. There is an add on for fund transfers, uh, just a quick vote for the app to add fund transfers uh, to the agenda, and then we will go through that process. Is there a motion to add it for the addition of the add on?
Make the motion to add the addition of.
Okay, we have a second. Just a roll call on that, please, panel.
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Aye.
Trustee Gross.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
Aye.
Trustee Finnefrock.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Okay, with the budget transfers, uh, you've received the budget transfer listings. Is there any questions? That are presented in front in front of you? Uh, there will be an additional transfer that will take place um in the future regarding this budget year as as we come to the year end.
Nate, you say the budget transfers are May second, but how many how many months of transfers is this? When's the last time you did it? Or, you know, I guess?
Do you recall, Donna?
Really, in one one budget transfer so far this year, that was early on, is our three one at the technical.
Okay, so I, because I haven't seen transfers yet.
Yeah, so this is the second one.
Okay, so these few transfers in just the whole fiscal year?
Plus three.
Plus three?
Yeah.
That's masterful. Wow.
Just one on the water liability insurance. Is that have the rates gone up or just? Let me see, where am I here?
Yeah, um, I think I think with the water liability, I I think it was a combination of rate, and I think it was the formula that we used in the in the previous budget year as to our total liability, as to what we were going to charge to general and what we're going to charge to water.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, let's open. Okay, let's read the resolution. Yes, good call. Good call. So moved. Sorry. Roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Aye.
Trustee Gross.
Aye.
Trustee Kowalski.
Aye.
Trustee Finnefrock.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Shall we go on to um, we'll keep the we'll give John the most amount of time. So we'll go next to trustee comments. We'll start with Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
We appreciate the audience for coming this evening. Thank you for the privilege of your time. Thanks so much to our great Fire Department. You guys are wonderful. Thank you for all you do for us. I did attend with the other trustees, phase one Orchard Homes Open House, and that was very impressive and very affordable. I thought for what you give for your buck up there, it's beautiful. And I thought, yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Gross.
First of all, Artie, I'd like to say thank you to you and all of the Sullivan family. You have dedicated your lives to us and your wives. So but it's always been a pleasure. I've had the pleasure of having, or not having the pleasure, of the Fire Department coming and responding to my house several times. Every time was very professional and very well done and very thoughtful to the people in the house. And I want to say thank you very, very much to all of you.
Well, I want to thank you, Pat, that you were the one appointed.
Are you sure you still want to?
And this is why we're canceling May sixteenth meeting, Pat, just for that reason.
Hey, if I could cancel more meetings, you let me know.
Oh dear, oh dear. Trustee Kowalski.
I have nothing else. Thank you, sir.
Trustee Finnefrock.
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. On to manager's report.
Just a couple of real quick items here. Uh, the first thing that we've got in your packet should be invite to the annual Fire Department Inspection Dinner, uh, which is going to be Saturday, May eleventh, six o'clock at the fire station. Uh, like I said, there should be an invite in your packet. Uh, you should also have received one in the mail as well. Uh, I'm also going to let you know uh that we received a resignation letter today from our part-time court clerk. Uh, her last day will be on May ten. Uh, so we will be in the process of looking for a new uh part-time court clerk. Yesterday, New York State uh put a notice out of their New York State or New York Swims Grant Application Process. Uh, I do believe the governor's office put that out prior to the host sites of where the application information is, because it's still not there today, as to get information. Uh, but what the reason I am bringing this to your attention is that uh it is a grant that we are going to take a look at, see if it fits what we wish to do uh with the Thorn Street Pool. Uh, and then at the June sixth meeting, we will have a grant application for you to consider as far as that grant application process. Just on the surface, uh, they've made a hundred fifty million dollars available. Uh, the first round of ninety million is going to is set up for the undeserv un underserved communities. The application process actually starts June thirteenth, closes July twelve with the announcement in August. That's their initial plans, and it is a twenty percent match.
Which is an eighty percent. And just as a point of reference, we have a sixty percent.
Correct.
Okay.
What I don't know at this time is what those dollar values are, meaning up to X amount or those types of things. That that information has not been disclosed or has not been posted yet. So we will keep you in tune with that.
And these money reviews for what?
Pool restoration. Um, there are, the the governor has put this hundred ninety million or hundred fifty million dollar program into uh areas where the underserved have access to swimming. Uh, they have realized the number of drowning deaths occurs with people that are not familiar to swimming. Uh, some of these monies are for staffing, uh, so that municipalities can hire lifeguards. Uh, some of these monies are in for swim programs as well as engineering studies uh to either build pools or to renovate pools. In addition to that, ten percent of these monies are going to what they consider the ancillary activities, uh, which would be splash pads, picnic tables, uh, and those those amenities that you would see in and around a pool or aquatic area.
Right, right.
Uh, so again, this information is information that I'm aware of based on conferences or webinars that I've been on. The actual document has not been uh produced yet.
I think our pool would apply for it because should, because I don't think we've ever really updated that pool.
It's been it's been a long time. I think the last renovation was ninety four, ninety five, somewhere in there.
Hmm, okay, here we go with where did you come up with that question from me? Do you do you know how many approximate number of how many municipal pools there are in the state that we will be vying for for this grant money?
statewide, I have no idea.
Like I said, don't ask me where it came from.
Um.
But I think if you take a look at our.
There's there's three in the county.
Yeah.
Now, whether or not the county or uh West O'Meara will apply, I have no idea. I'm hoping the county doesn't know about it.
The uh, one of the good things, speaking on behalf of the Village of Horseheads, Nate, is that I think we can agree that you there's been so much prep work done by you. This really falls into a shovel-ready project with how close you have brought the engineering and the bids and everything. So I think that makes it very tangible and very advantageous in that bid process or that that competition.
Yes, yeah. So again, anticipate uh anticipate a resolution to move forward with this particular grant at the June meeting. Even Settys, uh, they've been in the village. They came in yesterday. They're here a little bit today. Uh, they'll be here uh remainder of this week and first part of next week. Really, what they are doing is they're completing the restoration from the fall. Uh, basically, what they're doing is going back through topsoiling, uh, uh, putting in some hydroseed, those types of things, kind of cleaning up the landscaping, et cetera. Right now, we have roughly seventy eight thousand dollars uh on retainer for them to finish this work uh before that's released. Uh, once we release that seventy eight thousand uh to deep in Settys, uh, then we go into the closing of this particular project, uh, working with the bonding people, and then moving forward to where we could get to start making payments on on this project. Uh, currently, we 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 are gathering quotes to repair the uh roof over at Teal Park. We've received two out of our mandatory three. So once we get that third quote, we'll award that and have the have that work done in regards to there. And then the last thing that I have at this time is uh tomorrow morning, after the department head meeting, uh, Don Gaylord and I are going are going to travel down to Vestal. Uh, Vestal is replacing one of their uh water trucks uh with a truck. Currently, they have a used truck that has a valve turner on the backside of it. In our current budget, we budgeted monies for a pull behind valve turner. Okay, so that basically what this valve turner does, it goes down onto the shaft, and then it rotates that nut force three to turn off or turn on. Currently, we stick the key down and we walk around X number of times until it's either on or off. What this truck will allow us to do, if we decide to move forward with this truck, is it will help us create and also be able to enhance our valve turning exercise program. Okay, right now, when we exercise our valves, it's based on need, because somebody needs the water turned off or turned back on again. We should be really exercising the valves within the village two to four times annually. Okay, this app, you know, so the reason that we had put this piece of equipment into the budget was is to help us to do that. Shortly after the budget was created and through contact with even Settys, uh, we had heard that the uh Village of Vestal was has a truck with a valve turner on it, and that they were replacing that particular truck. So basically, what we what we're going to do is we're going to to Vestal, we're going to take a look at it, see if it's worth pursuing. Uh, the Village of Vestal will surplus it. They know that we are interested in it. There's been no dollar figures discussed uh to this purchase or the possibilities of. But anyway, uh, Don and I are going to take a look at that tomorrow, and uh I'll get a report back to you as if it's worth worth pursuing or or not. Okay, um, outside of that, uh, that is all the information that I currently have. Uh, I will be out of town this weekend. Uh, I will be in New Hampshire. I'll be back on Sunday. I'll be here on Monday, and then Tuesday I will be going to Maine, and I'll be in Maine for the into the following Sunday. Uh, then I'll be back for Monday, Tuesday, and then off to Albany with Kevin for the NICOM. So over the next couple of weeks, uh, I personally will not be on site much, uh, but I will have access through email and of course, the phone. That is all that I have.
Department heads, would you like to, Donna?
Um, well, congratulations to Artie on stepping down and Darlene and to the Brian and Vicki and Sarah, my dear. Congratulations.
Chief Sewell.
Repeat, Donna and all of you. Congratulations, Artie. Well-earned. I know you're not going to go away, but. I'll say the rest of that. God bless you.
Okay.
Just want to thank Artie for the years of service, that he has served the village in that capacity as chief assistant chief. I had the luxury of years and years ago, you know, when he was down three and involved in the Fire Department. So welcome to new regimes.
Thank you for that. Hey, John, are we good with the water rules and regulations?
Sure. Well, first, congratulations to Artie, uh, richly deserved transition. So congratulations for to you, and also congratulations to all the new officers of the company and the Fire Department. So with that having been said, the I believe you have in your packets a draft resolution adopting the rules and regulations and schedules A and B of those regulations. Um, so what I'm doing is working off of that uh draft resolution. So the what I can do is either tell you the I'll tell you the changes that I am proposing to the resolution. Um, and you guys can sort of follow along if you want uh with what you have in your material. I'm going to start, I'm going to start with.
John?
Yes.
Do you want to read? You want to read the resolution as a whole? And then just insert your changes as is?
I thought I'd tell you what the changes are and then then go back and read the whole thing, whichever you prefer.
I like that. All right, go go with your changes first.
Okay, uh, what I'm starting with is the portion of the resolution that starts out with now therefore be a result. So it'll read as follows. Now therefore be a result that the Board of Trustees does hereby adopt the proposed changes to the Water Department Rules and Regulations, which uh accepting periodic water rate and fee charge changes were last revised, uh, blank. Uh, and I think that that Hannah can provide that date. I don't know what that date is. Uh, said changes accepting water rates and fee changes shown on schedules A and B are adopted this day and shall become effective immediately with the and now this is being added with the adjusted with I'm going to back to with the adjustment authority in section seven point one uh to be for clerk treasurer two hundred and fifty dollars and village manager five hundred dollars. Then it would continue, be it further resolved, that the proposed water rates and fees changes uh shown on schedules A and B of the rules and regulations are hereby approved and adopted, comma, after being revised and adjusted by discussion of this board this date and modified as noted below, and you'll you'll get to that in a minute. Said water rates and fees shall supersede and replace the water rates and fees set forth in prior resolutions of this board. Said water rates uh and fees shall become effective June one, two thousand twenty four. Schedule A, now this is being added, schedule A is revised to provide for a three percent increase in the per one thousand gallon rate for all billing classes annually, effective on June one each year hereafter, beginning June one, two thousand twenty five. Um, so the I assume I gather that this three percent is not this adjustment, but it's going to be a year from now. So that's what that is attempted to do. Then it would continue to read uh schedule B fees. Uh, let me start again. Schedule B fee categories are revised as follows. Emergency call out fee, three hundred bucks. Customer request uh for shut off scheduled fifty bucks. Delinquent account charge, one hundred and fifty dollars. Consistent delinquent account charge, two fifty. Delinquent account turn on fee, one fifty. Annual meter inspection fee, two fifty. Uh, initial in uh meter inspection fee, two fifty. I think I read I read that last one wrong. It should have been initial meter installation inspection fees, two fifty. So I've taken the uh changes, as I understand them, to be. changes as I understand them to be in schedule B. Is that, have I picked up the changes that you had in mind?
We missed emergency call-out fee and customer.
Okay, looks good.
All right, so, all right, then I'll save Hannah the effort of reading this thing. This is the base resolution. "Whereas the Village of Horsets owns, operates, and maintains a potable water distribution system for the benefit of the residents and businesses in the Village of Horsets and certain customers and water districts outside the boundaries of the village. And whereas, as part of such operation, the Board of Trustees has adopted rules and regulations, Water Department Rules and Regulations, which have been amended from time to time. And whereas such rules and regulations provide for the adoption and modification of the rules and regulations, comma specifications, comma fee, water rates, and other matters by resolution. And whereas village staff have made recommendations to this board and village manager Nathan Nagel regarding proposed changes to the rules and regulations for conformity with more up-to-date Water Department operation, operating procedures, as well as changes to water rates and fees. And whereas this board has considered the proposed changes to the current rules and regulations as well as modifications to water rates and fees, and finds the same to be meritorious. And whereas the water system is operated as a self-supporting utility enterprise, and whereas revenue from water service rates and other sources fund the ongoing operation and capital needs of the village water system, including providing for normal facility operations, replacement and repair of equipment, improvements required to meet state and federal regulatory requirements, inflation and other costs. And whereas village staff have demonstrated that recommended changes do not exceed the reasonable cost of providing water services as such, the proposed increases are not levied for general revenue purposes. And whereas the proposed changes reflect the cost of providing services to all customers and customer classes. And whereas the Village of Horsets Board of Trustees finds that based upon information presented, the proposed changes to the rules and regulations, specifications, water rates and fees, one, recover the reasonable estimated cost of services for which the rates are charged. Two, the costs are allocated among customers so as to bear a fair and reasonable relationship to customers' burdens on and benefits from the water distribution system. Three, secure the financial stability of the water distribution system. And four, ensure efficient, cost-effective, and high-quality services." Now, we're getting into the changes. "Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees does hereby adopt the proposed changes to the Water Department Rules and Regulations, which accepting periodic water rate and fee changes were last revised, blank, two thousand sometime. Said changes accepting water rate and fee changes shown on schedules A and B are adopted this day and shall become effective immediately with the adjustment authority in section seven point one to be clerk treasurer two hundred and fifty dollars and village manager five hundred dollars. Be it further resolved that the proposed water rates and fees shown on schedule A and B of the Rules and Regulations are hereby approved and adopted and adopted after being revised and adjusted by discussion of this board this date and modified as noted below. Said water rates and fees shall supersede and replace the water rates and fees in prior resolutions of this board. Said water rates and fees shall become effective on June one, two thousand twenty-four. Schedule A is revised to provide for a three percent increase in the per one thousand gallon rate for each billing class effective, or annually effective on June one each year hereafter, beginning June one, two thousand twenty-five. Schedule B fee categories are revised as follows. Emergency call-out, three hundred bucks. Customer request for shut-off, scheduled fifty. Delinquent account charge, one fifty. Consistent delinquent account charge, two fifty. Delinquent account turn-on, one fifty. Initial meter installation inspection fee, two fifty." That's the end.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Last and certainly short, the mayor's report. I wanna thank the Family Resource Center for their presentation. This was a long time coming, in my opinion, on the campaign of looking at, albeit we're not there yet because of NICOM, having the two meetings a month, and having the presentations, not only from outside organizations that are affecting our village residents, but from internally departments and what they're doing to provide the next phase of services for our residents is monumental. And tonight, we saw the beginning of that, and I am very excited to say in June and onward, we will start seeing more presentations for not just what we do here for transparency, but to also provide enlightenment to what we need to do as trustees and for publication for the whole village as well. In the terms of transparency, I wanna thank the board, and I wanna thank Nate, and I wanna thank the residents. I, coming from previous board servings and being here tonight, greatly value beyond, also beyond words, the ability for us to have discourse and to not always agree, but to come together and have this dialogue and this debate, which I believe ultimately serves the village residents better than, I far say, met other municipalities that would just go along and rubber stamp things. I am proud that these discussions happen in public session and that we don't always agree, because I truly believe that when we always agree, we're not representing everybody's interests. So thank you, trustees. Thank you, Nate, for always providing your insights from what we have. And that's greatly valued, and I never wanted that to change in any way. With that being said, do I have a motion for adjournment? Motion. That sounds good. All in favor? There we go. Have a good night, everybody.
I thought we were gonna stay here all night, thank you.